All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our zoning board's Thursday, January 23rd, 2025 meeting. So we'll get right to the pleasure allegiance first, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. You want to start the agenda?
Sure. So we have some reserve decisions from our last meeting on January 9th, 2025. The first, appeal number 2024-035 for 12th of Ostrander Avenue. Pursuant to general municipal law 239, referral of use variances is required to go to the Suffolk County Planning Commission, and the commission has not yet rendered a response to our referrals. So the zoning board cannot make a decision on the matter. So we will have to adjourn the reserve decision to the February 13th meeting.
So in addition, members of the zoning board of appeals, I had a conversation with counsel for the applicant, and while the public hearing was closed for reserve decision, counsel on behalf of the applicant had submitted documentation late for zoning board of appeals members' consideration. All those documents were provided to the members of the zoning board of appeals for consideration. In light of same, I believe there might be one or two individuals who would like to speak on the application. So with counsel's consent and opening it up very limited, if anybody wishes to be heard on this application, they may.
Are you attorney?
No, I am not.
Good to hear.
Raise my right hand.
Is there a way to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Amanda Graham's, Riverhead, Reeves Park, 86 Park Road. First, I want to thank Ms. Parente and the rest of the board. You do such an outstanding job keeping Riverhead the way it should be kept, following rules, laws, and policies that you and the other planning boards have put in place. With that said, there was also a commission for the cannabis shops and variances that would be applied to them and where they would be located. I mean, you invested in that, and that took a long time. It took like a year or two for that committee to come up with their recommendations and their policies to adhere to. The store we have now is the largest in New York State, the largest. I drive by it every day, no less than 15 cars there. It's a lot of use, a lot of use. I'm standing here because I don't want Riverhead to be the pothead place. That old bank is near homes, residences, children. It's not zoned for it. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the person who's leasing that property is from Matituck. And that town shut it down, didn't they? Nobody has any cannabis stores out on the North or South Fork as, except for the reservations, excuse me. So please do Riverhead right, stay with the variances and policies which are in place in order to have a very contained area. We don't need to have shock and awe, and we don't need to also appease somebody because they went out ahead and thought they could lease a property with such accommodations being made to them. And I thank you again for your service. It doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Say anyone else out there?
Counsel, would you like to say?
Somebody else want to respond?
Very briefly, no need for the oath, I understand. Okay. Andrew Schreiber, again, on behalf of the applicant, just very, very briefly, all points understood. I would just ask that the board, I would refer back to what we discussed in terms of impacts on the neighborhood, and I think the demonstrative that Mr. Senleski prepared showing the sort of straight line of places where the onsite retail is allowed compared to our shop, which is sort of, when you look at that line, it stops, and then the line kind of continues after the shop, so that the impact, in terms of any impacts on residential, would be, again, the same. I don't need to blabber that, that's in our prior submission, and I would just emphasize that with a complete understanding, as we talked about with the process that this board went through, not this board, the town went through in passing its regulations. The reason that this special use exception exists in your code is where you have something that may not fit within the zoning rule but would otherwise be in harmony with the circumstance, surrounding circumstances. So in that respect, I would just refer back to our submissions. I know we want to keep it short, and I thank you for the ability to respond.
February 13th?
Yeah, so officially closed and will hold reserve decision for February 13th, 2025, pending response from the planning commission.
And counsel, please, please feel free to contact the planning office prior to that date to make sure that the county planning commission has completed their review.
We will, and we appreciate that. There was an effort to reach out to us today, and I'm sorry that we missed that connection. I appreciate the opportunity to have spoken tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, it's moved in second, and Mr. Portia.
Mr. Chairman?
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
We're just adjourning it to February 13th.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Zaweski.
Aye.
Mr. Zilla.
Aye.
And Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so you've been adjourned until the February 13th. You're welcome.
So the next reserve decision is appeal number 2024-037, Fisher Realty Group, 940 to 946 West Main Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County, tax number 600-124-3-1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and 600-125-2-5.2, Peconic River Community Zoning for an interpretation of a determination made by zoning officer. This was set for reserve decision. It was heard at our last meeting on January 9th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board, with respect to appeal number 2024-37, the following conclusion and determination is being made. A reading of the existing zoning and review of the facts and circumstances surrounding the current application and property history requires this board to concur with the zoning officer's determination that the outdoor storage of repossessed vehicles is not accessory to the office of the repossession business. Rather, the office for the repossession business is accessory and subordinate to the storage of the vehicles. The automobile repossession use is not a permitted use within the Peconic River Community Zoning Use District. The board finds that the applicant's argument that the prior zoning board decision granting outdoor storage to Blackman Plumbing Supply is no different than the proposed outdoor storage of repossessed motor vehicles is not supported by the facts, documentation, and testimony. The record for decision 10-22 is clear in that the outdoor storage was limited to specific materials related to the plumbing supply business and restricted to a finite area. Accordingly, the appeal must be denied. Based on the foregoing, the board hereby denies the application in its entirety.
Yes, second, somebody move it?
So moved, second.
All right, Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mr. Zaweski.
Aye.
Mr. Zilla.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that's a decision. Okay, that's it?
We'll move on to public hearings. The first public hearing tonight is appeal number 2024-038, Claude Micali, 99 Cliff Road East, Wading River, Suffolk County, tax number 600-27-3-25, Residence B80 zoning. This is for as-built conditions to a residence. Applicant requests variances and/or relief from chapter 301-31, where impervious surface coverage is 43.4% and the maximum allowed is 15%.
You attorney?
I am not, sir.
Did you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Justin Phillips, NYCD Group, Expeditors and Drafters, 270 Spagnoli Road, Suite 210, Millville, New York, 11747.
I go right ahead.
Good evening, board. Again, my name is Justin Phillips. I'm here tonight representing Mr. Claude Micali, owner of 99 Cliff Road East in Wading River. We're here tonight to request a variance from Town Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 301-31, to maintain existing impervious surface coverage of 43.4% where the maximum allowable is 15%. Mr. Micali purchased the property in March of 2018 and appeared before this board in January 2019 for a variance approval to maintain an accessory wood deck in the front yard, which was granted at that time. The property at that time was not in compliance with the impervious surface coverage, nor was it in compliance at the time of the town's rezoning in 2004. I reference this only to explain that the property is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot per Town Zoning Ordinance for Zone RB80, as are all of the adjoining properties in the area. The minimum lot area for the parcel in RB80 is 80,000 square feet. The subject property is 6,000 square feet, so it's completely undersized for the zoning ordinance. The existing residence itself covers 16% of the lot, so the house, as it exists, is putting the property over the allowable amount. The undersized lot with the pre-existing residence and RB80 creates a non-self-imposed undue hardship. The subject property does have sufficient permeable surface area for the drainage, and no rainwater will be directed onto the neighboring properties. The existing pavers have been in place for some time, and to my knowledge or my client's knowledge, has not received any complaints from any of the neighboring properties. Additionally, the existing lot coverage is in line with the surrounding properties and is in character with the neighborhood. Lastly, I'd just like to note that this board has previously granted similar relief for a neighboring property at 63 Cliff Road East under appeal number 2020-014, where approval was granted for 41.2% of impervious surface coverage. That property is the exact same size lot as my client's and is only nine houses away on the same side of Cliff.
Heather, did you receive the affidavits imposed?
Yes, I received all of the affidavits, the proof of mailings, proof of posting, so we're good.
And subject matter of the posting?
So the mail, the post, it's just the picture of the poster with the date and time, but the mailings reflect the relief requested that was on the denial letter. So for impervious surface coverage, 43.4% where the maximum allowed is 15%.
So the application that was submitted did not mention anything regarding the impervious surface. What it talked about was relief for a partial in-ground pool. Then the EAF that was submitted was, again, did not mention any impervious surface and instead talked about an in-ground pool. In addition, the tax map numbers and the description of the property were in error. The plan, survey that was submitted, also didn't highlight and detail any of the impervious surface requests. So at this point in time, I'm recommending to the members of the zoning board of appeals that this matter be adjourned until February 27th for you to correct the application, correct the EAF. We can verify the subject matter of the posting, and we'll follow up with you whether or not it has to repost. We're not going to require you to resubmit an application or an application fee, but what also will be required is, on the survey, to identify from the survey in 2019 wherein the zoning board of appeals granted relief, to the survey today clearly demonstrating the areas where there was a change increasing the impervious surface. The members agree, take a vote.
Excuse me. Did you realize that all these mistakes were in this?
No, sir, I did not.
Okay. It's moved in second, and Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mr. Zaweski.
Aye.
Mr. Zilla.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So some work to be done here.
And I can follow up with you to show you the specific pages that are referencing the semi-in-ground pool and an in-ground pool. I know what happened. The documents were just copied over from the previous hearing that we attended, and obviously there was oversight on that.
And that was for a different parcel?
Yes. That, the pool has nothing to do with this property, so it was just the impervious surface as it was noted in the disapproval.
Yeah, when we visited the property, we were looking for pools, but there were...
It's only impervious surface, and that's, we'll correct.
Nice try, Mr. Zill.
I'm sorry.
Nice try.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Okay, next we have appeal number 2025-001, Ginger L. Gordon trustee, 776 Soundshore Road, Jamesport, Suffolk County, tax number 600-7-3-37, Residence A40 zoning for a proposed in-ground pool and poolhouse. Applicant requests variances and/or relief from chapter 301-9A1A where accessory structures are not permitted to be located in a front yard.
You attorney?
I'm not.
Okay. Please raise your right hand. Did you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and address, and would you pull the mic down to you?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name's Megan Carrick, and my address is 206 Lincoln Street, Riverhead, New York, 11901. I have some packets, if you would like to...
Bring them up, please.
Basically what you already have, but I want everybody to have it in front of them. So I'm here tonight to represent our clients who currently reside at 776 Soundshore Road, and they're looking to build a pool and a poolhouse on their property. Given that the lot is a waterfront property and the existing house is in close proximity to the water, we are proposing to place the pool and the poolhouse in the front yard. To ensure that the project aligns with the character of the neighborhood, we have positioned the pool and the poolhouse at the closest point to the front property line is 92 feet, which would be to the poolhouse. Additionally, we have located the poolhouse to block the view of the pool from the street. We also considered our neighbors in this design. The pool has been positioned adjacent to the east neighbor, so it abuts their garage, so it provides some privacy there, and these conditions can be seen in the survey and photos that I just gave you. Since the proposed structures are landward of the house, we don't believe that we should have any environmental issues there, so I'm here to answer any questions that you have. Thank you for your time.
The poolhouse, is that all enclosed?
Yes.
And what's inside there?
It's really just going to be open space. They want space for like a table and then storage in the wintertime.
Bathroom, shower, or anything?
No.
Okay, thank you.
What are the dimensions of the patio? You provide the dimensions of the pool, 16 by 32, but no dimensions of the proposed patio.
Hold on one second. I don't have those on me, but I believe that we went out 12 feet at the largest part, and then around it was five.
We're going to need that down the road.
Okay. I know Heather had mentioned before the proposed impervious surface is 19.9%.
We're going to need that, Wolf.
Okay.
Anything else?
We're going to need that by the, placed on the survey.
Okay.
Anybody want to be heard? Anyone out in the audience that would like to speak on this variance? Come right up, please. Please state your name.
My name is Cindy Ellen Bogan, and I am 774 Soundshore Road, so I am the property directly to the west of this property.
West, okay.
And I did receive notification in the mail that this was happening. We are a summer cottage, so we are all boarded up and home, and we have not yet met our neighbors, so they would not have been able to contact us nor I them, but we received notification Tuesday, two days ago, about this meeting today, and I just received notification that it would be accessory structures to the front yard, and that was the variance they were seeking, but I didn't receive any plans, so...
Would you like...
I would love to see them, please.
I will know all of our appeal documents are available online for viewing, so it includes the application and the proposed plans.
Thank you. So I just really would love just a little bit of time to look and see, but my concern mostly is I know that we all have tiny properties and everybody wants to make the most of them, and I respect that. I, everybody's entitled to do what's within. I know this will set a precedent a bit. I don't know that a lot of other people are, have done the front yard on the street. I understand why they do want to do, and that's not a problem for me. What I worry about is we sit below them. As the slope of the property goes, as it goes down, we are down, and so the water runoff from the road crosses their property and goes into a gully between our properties. We share a bulkhead, and there is a gully underneath my stair, or their stairs to the beach are right next to my stairs, and so anything anyone does to their property directly affects the neighbor. So my concern is runoff. I think that she said that the property, that this would be on the east. So it will be on the east side?
Abiding the...
Yeah. It's going to be 10 feet from this property line, so it's going to be closer to... How close is it to where they park the cars?
Over here.
Is the cars?
This is where they park their cars here, so...
Okay.
The poolhouse will be here, and then this will be...
And this will all stay the same?
That will all stay exactly the same.
And the grade doesn't change?
The grade does not have to change.
Okay.
Does that satisfy you, ma'am?
It does satisfy, it does satisfy me. My question is, though, I have had neighbors that have had things turned down for, I also was concerned about the poolhouse. As long as the pool, the poolhouse does not, it's just a, like, an eating area.
It's really just an eating area since it's in front of the house and there's some space.
Yeah, that's fine.
So you satisfied?
I, I am satisfied. I think that's everything, as long as it doesn't change the grade and as long as it doesn't affect us with runoff or anything like that, that would be, it's really nothing, it's really your decision whether it's in the front or not, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this variance? All right, who's got it?
All right. Mr. Chairman, respectfully, with respect to appeal number 2025-001, I move that the appeal of Ginger L. Gordon trustee, 776 Soundshore Road, Jamesport, S C T M, number 600-7-3-37, pardon me, Residence A-40 RA-40 zoning for variance and/or relief from chapter 301-9A, subdivision 1 subdivision A, where accessory structures are not permitted, be permitted to be located in the front yard, be granted, subject to the following. Number one, submission of dimensions of the patio and cumulative impervious surface coverage for the parcel by a licensed engineer that meets the impervious coverage required for RA-40. And two, use of poolhouse shall be limited to seasonal use consistent with months when the pool is open, and as such shall not be improved for the positive heating supply, and shall not be used as habitable space such as living accommodations, sleeping, et cetera, and shall be limited in use as accessory to the pool and single-family dwelling. And finally, three, no property change in grade, and this would obviously be in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Okay, it's moved in second. Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mr. Zaweski.
Aye.
Mr. Zilla.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your variance has been granted, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have appeal number 2025-002, Orlando Lopez Azama, 1022 Parkway Street in Riverhead, Suffolk County, tax number 600-123-1-4, Residence A40 zoning. Applicant requests variances and/or relief from chapter 301-11, where proposed front yard setback is 19.2 feet and the minimum required is 50 feet, and where side yard setback is 1.5 feet and the minimum required is 25 feet.
Okay. Anne Marie, do I have to swear in again for this case? Okay. Did you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Megan Carrick, and address is 206 Lincoln Street, Riverhead, New York, 11901. In addition, I have packets for you guys to look at, too.
Go right ahead.
All right, so I am here on behalf of Orlando, who wants to enclose his existing front porch to create some additional living space for him and his family. Our proposal involves utilizing the existing foundation and the existing roof that is over the front porch, so we're just going to frame in new walls to aim to expand the living room and the kitchen to give them some more usable space, because it's kind of tiny in there right now. So while this design does require setback relief, we don't believe it's self-imposed as this is how the house is configured currently, and we're not looking to expand the footprint whatsoever, and we don't think it will have any adverse effects to the neighborhood because we're not really changing too too much, just adding some walls around that front porch. So I can answer any questions that you might have on this.
Do you have the pictures of, Heather, Heather, do you have the pictures of the property?
Yes, so I...
We have some questions on some of the structures on the property.
Sure. Yeah, so it looks like they added an additional shed behind the garage, and there's some sort of pergola structure that's in the driveway. Okay. I wasn't aware of the shed. I know that there is a temporary pergola structure in the driveway that if you want it to be removed, you could, we can remove it, it's like a Costco buildup thing. Okay. And that doesn't look like it. I truthfully didn't venture all the way into the rear backyard to see the shed, so...
Did that cover all the buildings?
Yeah, so those were the two anomalies, you know, between the survey and existing conditions. We just want to make sure that everything has the proper permits. Sounds good. And if the shed is under 144 square feet and meets the requirements as far as setbacks are concerned for a free shed, a permit might not be required, but it's hard to tell from the aerials, and it's not on the survey. We would be happy to look into that and make sure that we get that legalized.
Is anybody in the audience that would like to talk on this variance? Come right up.
I'm just recording. My name is Peter Gardino.
Kathy Gata.
Solemnly swear to tell the truth. Please state your name and address, both of you.
Peter Gardino, 1028 Parkway Street. This is my spouse, Kathy Gata.
Okay, could you pull that mic down a little bit?
Sure.
So you're talking.
We live at 1028 Parkway Street, which is the house adjoining this property on the west side.
You're on lot seven, then, right?
Excuse me?
You're on lot seven on the west side?
I don't know exactly what lot.
Okay, gotcha.
You're on the same side as the garage?
No.
No.
The other side.
Same side as the house.
The same side as the house.
All right, sir, go right ahead.
My first question is, according to this verbiage here, it's saying that the front yard setback is 19.2 feet and the minimum required is 50? Is that correct?
That's the current zoning, yes.
Current zoning?
Mm-hmm.
The house has to be 50 feet from the street?
Yes, so for new construction, that's the requirement.
Okay. And the side yard setback on my side of the property is 1... And the side yard setback on my side of the property is 1.5 feet, and the minimum is 25. I understand that. My concern is that this house has been added to at least two times. This would be a third addition to the house, restricting the current property, open property. There's a shed in the back, which used to be a garage, and then another shed was put in there behind it. The driveway in front of the existing garage slash shed has been made into a patio so that we can have this structure, which the young lady here brought to everyone's attention, this pergola, metal and canvas pergola. There doesn't seem to be enough property to be doing any more expansion. And my concern is that the current house is 1.5 feet from the property line.
Well, it's a porch.
Excuse me?
It's the porch that's the 1.5.
Right. And the house.
Very close.
How close is your home to their property line?
Oh, not sure. Maybe 25 feet.
Isn't there vegetation between the two of you?
We have a line of, what do you call them? Privet, private hedges.
And they're about, what, 6'8" feet?
Yeah.
This is the house my grandfather built in 1996. We opened this house.
Just concerned that the house keeps getting closer and closer to the property line. The existing patio, I don't know. That's your job to figure out what the current, how deep it is, if it'll hold a foundation, if it needs a foundation. My concern is that it's going to have to be added to with a foundation that's going to be in line with the existing home, which is going to make it even closer than 1.5 feet to the property line.
Just to be certain, Megan, I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. You're going, you're planning on using right now the foundation that's supporting the porch?
No, we inspected the foundation of the porch.
You've got to come up to the mic.
Yes, we plan on using the current foundation of the porch. We inspected it, and it is structurally sound to be used for this addition.
So in essence, if there's no excavation going on?
Correct.
Nothing else, you're basically just enclosing the porch as it is right now?
We are enclosing it exactly as is.
So the footprint's not changing, and will not be any closer to the property line than what the porch is now?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any else, anything else? I said all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Clear? Are you comfortable with that? You're not building it further out?
Well, I don't know. If they're going to enclose the current porch, are they going to put another porch out?
How are they enclosing it? What are they building?
Megan, if you want to speak, you have to go on the road.
Yeah, is it, I mean, that'll have to be done within the proper constraints of the town code, the building department.
She can address that. Any other questions that should be laid on hold?
No.
Okay. Megan, can you just say how it's going to be enclosed?
Yes, so we will be building 2x6 walls in between the existing foundation. Well, we're going to further floor up on top of the existing slab, put flooring on that, but then put 2x6 construction up into the existing roof structure. There's already headers and stuff there. We don't have to mess with any of that, and then enclose it with... We're proposing three windows in the front, moving the front door, you know, just forward from where it is to line up to the edge of that patio, and re-siding it to match the rest of the existing house. Is that clear?
Any other questions here? Anyone else in the audience? What do you guys want to do here?
Mr. Chairman, with respect to appeal number 2025-002, I move that the appeal of Orlando Lopez Azama on 1022 Parkway Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-123-1-4, which is in residence A-40 zoning, for variance is under relief from chapter 301-11, where proposed front yard setback is 19.2 feet, and the minimum required is 50 foot, and where the side yard setback is 1.5 foot, and the minimum required is 25 foot, be granted, subject to the following. Applicant shall make application to the building department for building permits, inspections, and obtain the requisite certificates of occupancy for structures, gazebo, shed, constructed without permits within six months, and if applicant fails to receive the building department approvals and/or certificates of occupancies within six months of the date of this decision, the gazebo and shed shall be removed additionally, and the vegetative buffer on the west side shall remain. Be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with the amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second. Move from second, and Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mr. Weskey.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your variance has been granted, and good luck.
Thank you all. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Next, we have appeal 2024-031, Jason and Jamie Pastrano, 834 Soundshore Road in Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-8-1-8, residence A-40 zoning, for a single-family dwelling, in-ground pool, and existing hot tub. Applicant requests variances and/or relief from chapter 219-14A2, where proposed single-family dwelling, in-ground pool, and hot tub are not specifically allowed development under 219-14 subsection B. All development and bluff area is prohibited unless specifically allowed by 219-14 subsection B. This was adjourned from December 12th of 2024, and the applicants had, well, their representative has provided me with something for the board.
You don't have to be sworn in. Please state your name and address, just for us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Anton Boravina. My offices are located in Locust Valley, New York. On behalf of the applicant, we have heretofore submitted, I believe we already have, the proposed site plan, that also includes potential alternative locations relative to the proposed pool, the patio, and the house. I have with me to better explain why our current proposed site plan is the best practicable alternative, allowing the project to go forward in a manner that is compatible with the environment and consistent with the characteristics of the neighborhood, and also compatible with the conditions unique, associated with this property. Philip Rosillo is here, who will, with the permission of the board, come to the podium and address the board with respect to our proposed site, and also to discuss why alternative locations are frankly impracticable for reasons that will be mentioned in his presentation.
Have you been sworn in? Okay. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God? Please state your name and...
Philip Rosillo, 82 Meadowbrook Road, Seosset, New York.
What's your name again, sir?
Philip Rosillo.
Ace Phillips.
R-O-S-S-I-L-L-O.
Thank you.
Okay, so I ask that you kind of turn to option one, site plan, which is what was presented, the most recent presentation in the site plan. And I can walk you through the specific site conditions that we encountered in trying to kind of cite the home as well as the pool patio and some of the utilities. On the southern side of the lot, which is the landward side of the lot, there's an existing structure to remain, and further landward is an area that was recently designated as wetlands. And you'll see that there's these arching lines on the drawing that state 100-foot setback from that wetland, as well as 150-foot from that wetland. And there are these red objects that are floating in that space, and those are our, that's our septic system as well as our drywalls. And those utilities can only be situated in that shaded gray area. It cannot get closer to the wetland, or it cannot go to the seaward side of the property as it would be in the coastal erosion setback. That being said, as we move further north, the house is situated, and so we come to the rub here, and the rub is the pool and patio. We've been here before, and we've done our best to try to squeeze everything and move as far away from the bluff and coastal erosion hazard line as possible, and we believe that this approach gets us as far as possible. And we've basically taken the pool and situated it 27 and 1/2 feet from the sea hot line at its tightest point, and 29 four inches at its widest. You can see down at the bottom, there's some keynotes there. The total incursion into that, the 50-foot setback is 1,098 square feet, the pool making up 800 square feet of it, and the patio at 298. We felt that this was the best approach, and as you can see further in the deck, there is precedent in lot 862 Soundshore Road, where the pool is 37 and 1/2 feet from the sea hot line. And you can see that in the back, towards the back, where there's an aerial photograph, there's four houses down from our lot. The next page kind of gives you an idea of the disturbance to the existing footprint. The home sits on pier footings with, and then pilings from there, and in the excavation or the removal of the existing home is where the pool would sit. So this diagram cuts a cross-section through the existing structure and the footings, and shows that the pool would sit within the disturbance of the demolition of the existing And then we move to option two, and in one of our previous meetings, you had asked that we look at alternative options, you know, for the pool. We've come to the conclusion that we cannot situate the pool between the accessory structure and the home. There's no room, and we need to locate our utilities there. That is the only location for our utilities. You can see that the house is penetrating that 150 setback off of the wetland, so we'll be in front of sea hot for all of this. But for now, what you could see in option two is what we did is we rotated the pool, reduced the size of it, and reduced the size of the patio, and put the pool in the side yard there. Although this, you know, this is less of an impact or less of an incursion into the 50-foot setback, it kind of presents other challenges where the pool is situated in the side yard, closer to the neighbor, and, you know, you can see we did a sun study so that the pool kind of sits in shadow majority of the day, you know, reducing the size of their patio considerably. Again, this excavation is contained within the excavation, well, the portion of the pool is contained within the excavation of the existing home. And then we come to option three, which is the most aggressive option to get completely out of the 50-foot setback. And the pool is, again, situated on the side yard, reduced in size, and we've also reduced the patio. And this pool will, majority of this pool, I think 88% of the pool would be in shadow from the home majority of the day. You know, you could see that. There's a sun study as you kind of move through it, and you can see the shadows and how they sit on the pool. And then you come to an aerial photograph, and in the aerial photograph, you can see that there's been precedent set where the pool is on the seaward side of the property, the northern side of the property. Within this quick snapshot, and within seven lots of ours, four one way, two the other, there are three pools that are all situated on the seaward side of the property. Specifically, I'd like to highlight 862 Soundshore Road, and you can see there's some key points there. And as of a ruling on February 11, 2015, the pool was situated on the waterfront side. Obviously, the pool is keeping with, our pool is keeping with the nature of these other pools, and the setback from the sea hot line is 37 and 1/2 feet. The documents, the pages that precede are the surveys for these lots that were foiled. This exercise was kind of born from our last meeting to say, hey, have you looked at alternative options, and where could we, you know, move the pool to? And we tried everything. But being that, you know, the wetland was kind of recently determined, so that kind of, there's setbacks off the wetland, and we cannot penetrate that 100-foot setback off of the freshwater wetland on the front of the property. So that puts our septic system between 100 and 150 feet, and the only space for that is really between the two structures. And so our sighting zone has really become limited between the waterfront, the freshwater wetland setback, and the sea hot line setback. So you can see there's really a small area there for us to cram all this in. If you have any questions?
So the three properties that you analyzed and included in this booklet, you would agree that not one single one of those properties required a 219 permit. In other words, none of the proposed pools, houses, improvements were located within the coastal erosion hazard zone.
Not 862. The pool is within, it's 37 feet off of the sea hot line.
Heather, I know you did extensive research on these three properties.
So in my FOIL response to FOIL request 2024-2633, in which I provided the documents for Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-8-1-11, I mean, 8-1-12, which is 862 Soundshore Road, I said, you know, this has been processed by the planning department. There were no chapter 219 or ZBA documents on file for this property. There was a CAC approval, certificates, and surveys, which I sent you. So I know that you had referenced a decision, ZBA approved, February 11, 2015. So that ZB number, it says it's handwritten there. That's actually the permit number. I apologize for confusion, but that's what the building department uses to issue permits. And the received stamp that's on there is actually by the health department. This is their final health department survey, and I can't speak as to who was reviewing this at the time. I didn't work for the town, but they show a 50-foot setback from the top of the bluff. So I'm assuming that whichever zoning officer or inspector who was reviewing it took that 50-foot setback as the coastal erosion hazard area, and that's why they weren't required to go to the zoning board. Again, I can't really make assumptions because I wasn't here, but this did not require relief from the zoning board and its authority as the coastal erosion hazard board review. It was just given a building permit and corresponding certificate of occupancy.
I mean, these property, this property and our property are almost identical in the fact that the top of the bluff and the coastal erosion line are not, you know, are not in line. There's a 20-plus foot separation between the bluff. So, I mean, we are situated 51 foot 9 inches from the top of the bluff, but 27'6 from the coastal erosion. And their, you know, their situation is very similar. So, I mean, I'm not following how it would get approved. I mean, is it, if we're in that setback, do we not have to get it approved?
Again, I can't speak to that because I wasn't working for the town. The zoning board was different. The building inspectors were different. But it appears that they took the 50-foot setback from the top of the bluff. What is different about your property is the top of the bluff recedes a little bit... What is different about your property is the top of the bluff recedes a little bit where the stairs are. So, I mean, I would leave it to the board and council to determine, you know, is the landward most line where the top of the bluff, where it inflects and starts to recede, is that where we're taking the setback from?
Well, I did take a setback from that point as well as further down. So that's the 27.6, and the 29.4 is the, where it gets wider. But that, you know, our tightest point is 27.6. So I wasn't aware that there would be the ability to get an approval without getting a Chapter 219.
So typically, if you're with, if you're outside of the 50-foot jurisdiction, so 856 Soundshore Road and 818 Soundshore Road, they didn't need 219 or corresponding ZBA relief for the pools because they were more than 50 feet from that limit. I know 856 Soundshore Road did receive approval, ZBA approval for area variances, but not for the pool.
Was, in 2015, they didn't have to go in front of a Chapter 219 if they were 50 feet off of the coastal erosion line?
And that, so if your, so if your project was more than 50 feet, if you were out, that puts you out of jurisdiction, so you wouldn't be required to be before this board.
Right, but 50 foot from where, right? So there's a bluff?
So if your, if your option three was what you were proposing, you would not require a 219 relief?
Of course. But I fully understand what you're saying. So they are, in that, in 862, they're 50 feet from the top of the bluff, but 37 from the sea-haw line. We are 51 foot 8 inches from the top of the bluff and 27.6 from the sea-haw line. It's almost identical, the situation. So if we're, if we don't need a Chapter 219 if we're beyond 50 feet from the bluff, then, yeah, we don't probably need to be here. Do you follow what I'm saying?
I follow what you're saying.
Literally, I am.
All I can tell you is, you have a survey, it indicates the coastal erosion hazard zone, it's marked out at 50 feet and broken out 25 and 25. You are proposing development still within that coastal erosion hazard zone. You heard another application here tonight? They put their pool in the front yard.
We don't have that option. That's why I did all this.
But, but you are showing us other options. Is it your, is it the position of the applicant tonight that despite the fact that you presented option one, which was your original option, option two, and option three, your position is option one is the only desirable option?
I mean, it is, it is the most desirable option for, you know, for the client, and I think it, I think it presents the best as far as impact to, you know, the neighborhood. I think it conforms with the nature of the community. I think there's precedent. I'm not understanding the, I'm not understanding the difference between our lot and 862. I hear what you're saying, but I, it seems like there's something being disconnected, you know, where we're having to conform to that. We're in that 50-foot setback off the coastal erosion, just like they are. We are 10-foot more than they are, but we're both penetrating that 50-foot setback off of the coastal erosion line. So I, and I'm, and...
Is that the only application you're relying upon to essentially argue you're entitled to the same relief?
We foiled, I think...
Like 30 properties?
Yeah, close, but, you know, this is a very small, you know, we're looking at, I don't think we did that many.
It was, it was more than 20, I know, because I pulled the file.
Yeah, we think we did like seven on each side, but...
I appreciate the fact that you did your due diligence.
Some, but I took...
But to that point, if you've located only one property, and if there was an error in the review of that property, certainly not by the zoning board of appeals, but by prior planning staff, we would never take the position, well, let's just continue the errors. Doesn't work like that.
So was it an error?
I don't know, I'd have to look at it. But nonetheless, this board and council for this board would never recommend if something on another piece of property was granted in error to continue in that vein.
I'm not, I don't, I don't know. I didn't, I, my assumption was that they got an approval. They came through and did the same process, and we pushed everything back, and we, you had asked that we go and look at adjoining properties, and we looked at the adjoining properties, and we, this is what we discovered. So I, I would have, I made the assumption that they got a permit to do that, and I don't know, it happened in 2015, this is not a long time ago, so I can't imagine that something other than...
It would have required zoning board of appeals approval. Heather, can you confirm there were no zoning board of appeals relief?
Yeah, there was, there was no decision, no application. Like I said, the ZB 39505, that's indicative of a permit number.
Yeah.
So I did search the records, and I didn't find any zoning board documents for this particular property.
Can I also point out to you, in the different submission of plans, you've had cottage with two bedrooms, now in this plan, an office. You should really be careful with the town code. This is an RA80. You may have a accessory use for a office only within the dwelling. So it's important when you mark things on plans that you actually really review the code, so you know what you're putting forth on the plan, whether it's consistent with zoning.
Yeah, that was just a naming error on our side, and that, we picked that up after the first submission. So we, this was CO that has an office, and we've been consistent in our recent submissions that, you know, as to what that structure is.
Yeah. Just take a look at section, Chapter 301, Section 8.
Okay.
If I can just, the CO for that accessory structure was for a garage and a workshop with a bathroom. So I'm not sure what's there now, but it's certificate of occupancy...
There is a garage there.
Yeah, so it was a certificate of occupancy number 26416, dated July 15, 2016, for a one-story, one-car detached garage with bathroom and workshop.
Yeah.
So that's, that's...
There is a bathroom in there, and there's...
Yes. So that's what's permitted to be there.
Okay. I'm not sure how we move forward. What are these adjustments we do?
Well, if I may, as I understand the discussion, the papers that were submitted in connection with Lot 862 was apparently not submitted to the ZBA, it was our understanding that it was, but it was not. But that all said, the, what physically exists at 862 shows a pool located seaward. So from a matter of physical impact, not only with respect to the characteristics of the neighborhood, all pools being located on the seaward side of the dwellings, but from an environmental or potential impact on the bluff, it seems to me that the application that we now have for option number one is the best practicable alternative. Option number two, as was previously stated, would have issues associated with being closer to the lot line on the west side of the property, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, east side of the property, and would frankly not be consistent with the neighborhood, and frankly, also with respect to its functionality, given how it's located, would be shaded by that, by the home. Option number three is not practicable at all because it would necessarily require encroachment within the regulated area of the wetland. So we're really confronted with options number one and number two. And number, and from what I'm hearing is that what our submission of the permit associated with 862 apparently was not the subject of a ZBA formal approval. Okay, but that said, we submit that the same considerations or the criteria associated with the issuance of a variance apply here, and that is to have the pool located in front of the proposed residence. And as was indicated before, from, all of us, rightfully so, are interested in potential impacts on the bluff. We are, we are going to be moving the existing, I'm sorry, actually, demolishing the existing house with the pilings, okay, which go far deeper in the ground than the, than the proposed pool, and moving it further landward. We are, we will be, that act alone will be creating a disturbance where the pilings are currently located. The proposed pool fits within, fully within, comfortably within, the envelope of the disturbance. So the, so, so there would not be an adverse environmental impact associated with the construction of the pool relative to its distance from the, from the, from the actual regulated area of the, of the, of the hazard line. And that alone, independent, whether or not 862 was the subject of ZBA approval, in my view, is beside the point. In my view, it's form over substance here by relying, by saying that 862 was not the subject of a ZBA application or permit, and therefore it follows that what we're proposing to do for our property is somehow incompatible with environmental regulations or criteria or incompatible with the characteristics of the prop, of the neighborhood or the physical conditions of this property. So, so I don't believe, I submit, that the, that the apparent, not obtaining the permit with respect to 862 is, should be the deciding factor, but rather what physically exists for 862, what we're proposing to do for our property, and that our property will not have, given that we are moving the house with the pilings further landward, will not have any adverse impact on the, on the, on the line. And that therefore we satisfy the appropriate criteria under the code for the issuance of a 219 permit.
Could I ask you a question? You just said that option three encroaches upon the wetland. I'm trying to see where that is.
No, I don't, I don't, option three doesn't...
That's what he said.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I want to make sure. He said you couldn't do it because it was encroaching around the wetland.
No, no. No. Yeah, that just missed.
But it has nothing to do with it. So I want to understand the reason for option three, why it can't be done.
Well, option three kind of, well, two things. One, it, the pool is, is rotated and put into the side yard.
I understand that.
Right, so that, that is not typical in context with the, or nature of the community. It's reduced in size, and it reduces the size of the patio as well as put the pool in shadow.
Yep.
Eighty-eight percent.
But it's a pool.
Eighty-eight percent of the day. I'm sorry, I didn't hear...
I'm saying, but you're still getting a pool. There's no pool there now. Right, so it's maybe not the ideal pool, but if, if, I guess my question is, so I can understand where we're going with this. If it was option three and a likelihood of moving forward, or only option one, and we'll see what happens, what direction would we be going in? Because I think it may have some impact on where we vote.
I mean, I, you know, I don't, I would, I would go probably somewhere, I would go with option two. I would also consider option two as, as an alternative in, you know...
Why can't, this, this is here, cannot be located here.
No, can't go past it. I mean, if we are going to get denied, like you said, you know, they, they do want a pool. I feel it's, it's, you know, part of the, you know, I guess the, you know, in context with homes on the water here. It's part of a big feature and big part of their family. So, you know, if that's the only choice, that's the only choice, right? I don't...
Okay. I think we have some understanding now. Council, I don't know where we go from there, but...
Well, you know, you have to give the zoning board direction right now. If you're holding steadfast with option one, they'll make a determination either tonight or reserve decision. If you're offering them an alternative design, I'm sure the zoning board would give you an opportunity to resubmit new plans. But it's really on the applicant, and you really have to make a decision tonight.
I, I mean, I would want to speak to, you know, the owners and get their, you know, feedback on it. I mean, it's a hard decision to make right now. I mean, it doesn't seem like, you know, option one is on the table, so I don't know. I mean, if we're going with option three, are we, are we still part of a...
You might need an area variance for side yard setback relief. I'd have to double-check that.
For, in option three?
In option three, but you wouldn't be required to be before this board for relief from 219. Maybe I defer to council on that. Anne Marie?
Yeah.
Correct?
Correct. Obviously, you're well aware that the, the significance of the coastal erosion hazard zone and the requirements of 219 are strict. So as counsel to the zoning board and speaking for the members, it's your decision. If you tell the zoning board tonight it's option one, then so be it. You know, but, but we're not, it's not going to be continuously adjourned to rehear and rehear identical arguments.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, we made adjustments from...
Now, I, I appreciate the due diligence that you did, I know that you did...
But we also moved it considerably.
Right.
I mean, to, I, I think we would, I think we would want the board to consider option two, which is in between option three, option one and option three. There is some incursion into the 50-foot setback. I mean, so, you know, if I get this correct, we're not in front of the ZBA if we go for option three anyway.
Correct.
Unless, unless you need relief for a side yard setback, which it's a different section of code.
Yeah, and, and area variance relief has a reduced standard than the 219.
So how do we, do we ask you the vote on option two, or do we present...
Well, you could, you could inform the ZBA tonight that you're withdrawing option one and requesting an adjournment to re-present a different plan. If, if that's what you want to do.
Or by the way, stick with option two as is. We want to talk to the court.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, yeah, we would want to reserve in...
I think the best move, we're considering option number two, but I think the best practicable on our side frankly is to discuss it, to discuss this with the client and report back to the board.
You're going to discuss with the client whether we're going to do two or three, you folks?
Well, we feel, we feel that, as we stated earlier, that option number two is a, an alternative that does not pose environmental impacts associated with the bluff and takes into account, as compared to option number three, is, takes into account the proper use of a pool relative to the property, and characteristics of the neighborhood as well. So that's why we're inclined to go with option number two, but we do have to discuss this with the client.
Could they discuss with the client and then correspond with us? We can set a date for a reserve decision, or do you want to adjourn it?
Yeah, no, so if you're not withdrawing... Yeah, no, so if you're not withdrawing option one, then we'll mark it for reserve decision for 213.
We, we can do 213 or 227 are the next upcoming zoning board meetings.
And may I say?
With the caveat, if the zoning board of appeals agrees, reserve decision 213 unless counsel advises us within seven days of withdrawal of option one and the resubmission of a different plan somewhere, option three, option two, but certainly not another option one.
That'll work.
Heather, were you saying the?
Members, do you agree?
The area variance, setback variance on the side?
So I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. I would have to speak with the building inspector based on.
Were you saying that because the shading overlaps the pool there in the?
She said within seven days.
Because we have the, you know, the setbacks, is it?
Yeah, where is this, where is the side yard issue for this?
So you're showing a 10, 10-foot, 6-inch side back, side yard setback?
That's the pool.
That's the pool.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we have accessory structure setbacks for every residential zoning use district, and we have requirements from property lines and also from any other structure. I just have to double check the zoning on this because I don't know it off the top of my head.
Yeah, I think we checked that pool, you know, the pool and the house are different setbacks?
Correct.
But, okay, yeah, I, I thought we checked that. Okay, yeah, I'll check.
Obviously, I'd want to discuss with the chief building inspector, you know, because he would be reviewing the survey just because, you know.
And if it's needed, we'll have to make, we'll have to make that a proper.
Correct, because it's a different section of, the code is actually in chapter 301, it deals directly with the residential zoning use district. But you might not need it, so I don't, I'd have to double check first.
We'll get back. If I may, with respect to the reserve decision, we would like to, as I understand it, we will have the opportunity to, to state in writing the withdrawal of option number one and the consideration of another option, which for the sake of argument right now is option number two, or some variation thereof.
I would consider both those options, though, two and three.
I'm sorry, sir?
I would consider both your options for, to choose two and three.
Oh, well, all right, all right, well, well, we have two and three, or a blend of two and three, I think.
Yeah, and counsel, you should know that we, we looked over all three options, and the board liked option three, as opposed to option one and two.
Well, I certainly get that impression listening to the questions posed by the, by counsel as, as well, but I do believe that there are reasons why option two satisfies the criteria, and as compared to option number three is, is the best practicable alternative under the criteria the board considers regarding the issuance of a 219 permit. But we will get back to you regarding two or three, or a blend of two and three.
So before you leave, the zoning board of appeals would have to take a vote on reserve decision for February 13, with the caveat that if counsel contacts planning within seven days to submit an amended plan, then the reserve decision will be held at bay, pending review of the new plan.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Mr. Porshas.
Aye.
Soeweski.
Aye.
Mrs. Gazilla.
Aye.
And Mr. Barnes. Mr. Barnes?
Well, he's muted.
He's muted.
Aye.
There he is.
And I vote aye. So.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Stay warm.
Okay. Lastly, we have appeal number 2024-034, Fisher Realty Group, 940 to 946 West Main Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-124-3-1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and 600-125-2-5.2. Pecanic River Community Zoning, Proposed Commercial Buildings and Site Alterations. Applicant requests variances under relief from chapter 301-162A, where proposed floor area ratio is 77.5% or 200,100 square feet, and maximum permitted is 60% or 154,920 square feet. Chapter 301-162A, where proposed impervious surface coverage is 59.26%, 153,18 square feet, and the maximum permitted is 40%, 108,280 square feet. And chapter 301-162B, where proposed landscaped area is 40.75%, 105,167 square feet, and the minimum required is 50%, 129,100 square feet. This was adjourned from December 12, 2024.
Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board, counsel and staff. My name is Richard Eisenberg. I'm of counsel to Myers Wazey Law Firm, 990 Stewart Avenue, Garden City, New York. We had requested the opportunity to review our application and resume the hearing after our meeting before you on December 12. As a result of the various comments and questions from the board and counsel, we have in fact elected to modify our application, and I'd like the opportunity first to distribute the new proposed site plan, briefly discuss it, and then turn over testimony to our project architect. I'm here tonight with Mr. Ray Dickoff, who is the project manager, and with, and with Mr. Senlouski, who is the project architect. Mr. Frank Fisher, who is the principal of the applicant, is also present and of course would be available to answer any questions that the board or counsel might have. Might I step up with Marty and just briefly introduce the changes? Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, they got, yeah, they have it right up on the screen. They have it.
You'll recall that we had put in an application for the, for the landscaped areas requirement, the impervious surface requirement, the FAR requirement.
This is my first thing.
Yes, as a, as a result of questions and comments raised in December, we have been able to revisit the parking requirements for the non-nuance use that is our proposed building number two. And we have been able to determine that we can substantially reduce the parking while maintaining parking as a matter of right, and at the same time free up a substantial amount of area, which will allow us, we believe, to comply with the landscaped area provision also as a matter of right. Let's just show the highlighted portions.
To reduce the copy.
If you can see it, the key change, the key change to our modifications is shown in the green area for building number two, where there's a substantial reduction in the required parking, still, still in compliance with code for the non-nuance use, and a recapture of space which we would propose to utilize to satisfy the landscape area requirements. We believe it needs both the 50% and 40% requirements, and as a result, if the board is satisfied that our revised proposal in fact does that, we would ask for a finding that there's no longer a need for any variance under the landscaped area requirements and that that portion of our application be deemed moot. The remaining two requirements for which we're asking variances are the impervious surface and the FAR requirement. I'm going to defer in a moment to Marty, and what I can say however is the revised proposal represents a very material reduction in the requested variances for both those code sections. And in addition, we have brought with us today some research we have done, particularly with regard to the impervious, is it the impervious surface or the?
Right.
The impervious surface requirement, where we have been able to identify a number of prior decisions by the board, which are in line with, or in fact more generous than what we are requesting for that zoning requirement. There are no other material changes to speak of. We have added an additional interparcial connector on the north side of the property adjoining building one and building two, which we believe is an important plus, and no material changes to the look or aesthetics of the two proposed properties from, from street level. Finally, just one comment, and I'm sure Marty will be able to discuss this in more detail. The FAR issue is reliant exclusively on our request for subsurface parking. You may recall that at the December meeting, we indicated that we do believe there is a substantial call for subsurface vehicle parking. We have, as everyone knows, a lot of seasonal or summer residents who come from all over the country, across the North Fork and the South Fork, and they would have an opportunity to store their vehicles for the appropriate fee during the winter months, travel out here, pick, then pick up their vehicles and utilize them. And also frankly, we believe there will be a market for tranchants coming in as Riverhead continues its extraordinarily positive development, particularly with regard to young professional people coming in as new staffers at the PBMC expansion. We think there are going to also be people who will have a vehicle, who may, who may find that they don't need it, and for more than occasional use. So we believe that's also a market, and based on those factors, we would, we have continued to request that we have subsurface storage parking or vehicle storage only, and I will speak in more detail to the revised numbers. So without further ado, with the permission of the board and counsel, I'd like to turn this over to our project architect, who will give you the calculations on the revised requests for impervious surface and FAR, and also alert us to the research we have done on recent approvals.
Am I still sworn in?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. So could I stay here or?
No, stay right there. Mics are live.
So, I'd like to thank the board for the input that we had at the previous meeting. It proved to be very helpful. After the previous meeting, I, I went back and it really had a lot to do with what was said about the landscaping and the entrance into Riverhead. And what I did, Anne Marie, is I went back and I reread the code, and I realized, you know, the, the code section that we were requesting a waiver on, on the landscaping, the 50%, is subsection B. Subsection A is the dimensional chart, which as you had mentioned in an earlier appeal, that's a lesser standard. Subsection B was the issue about the landscape requirement. So realistically, that, that additional subsection goes beyond strictly a dimensional waiver or a request. It's actually got legislative intent for, legislative intent for achieving a certain goal, aesthetical, along that corridor entering Riverhead. We realized that and went back to my client. We sat down, and this sketch that I have here is an extremely interesting sketch, because this is actually my brain work. There's a lot of brain damage here. After the last meeting, I sat down, and if you look on here, there are little calculations, and there's areas where I got yellow, where I'm moving buildings, and I got all kinds of things I'm doing with different colors and calculations to work this through my brain, okay? What we did is as a result of this hard work that have you left, we came up with the plan that was just previously up here, and I'll, I'll put both copies up. And this particular plan, which is here, I don't need the full top one, just the bottom one. This particular plan is the result of all that hard work. We were able to achieve 50% on the landscaping. As a matter of fact, now, the landscaping will be over 50, it'll be 50.07. It was 40.75. So we've really done the hard work. Originally, there were, each building had a vehicular access on both sides. We eliminated that, so now there's two on the outside and one vehicular access in the center. But, so that eliminates a lot of paving, which was very good. And also still, with the cross access allows for fire, department access in the event of emergency response, et cetera. So as Mr. Eisenberg had said, as a result of this effort, that request for the variance is no longer required. We've eliminated that request completely. As it goes back to the impervious surface appeal, the colors up here, the green are areas that were previously pervious, impervious, that are not pervious. And as we adjusted the plan, you can also see some areas that were previously landscaped became hard areas. It was a balancing, and it's part of that hard work that we did. So similarly, our impervious surface appeal.
Just walk me through that. I'm not following that. Or, or are you getting to that?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, on the green.
I'm not following.
Yes, so actually, if you look at the top one here, you see that, the red line here?
Yes.
This is the previous plan that we had submitted to you. You see the building? And the parking is all around the building, okay? That red line on the new plan is here, back in the lawn area. So basically, what was parking back here? All this green is now landscaped area, it's not green space. We've completely reduced the amount of impervious surface, so that we've gained 50% of the landscaped area.
So just to be sure, visually depicted, if you look at everything in green, less what's in orange, that's all net increase?
That's all that increase in landscaping. That is correct.
The increase is very nominal. It's the two small spaces or three small spaces that are in orange, so they say. Recapture of what had previously been green space to give us the parking spaces as a matter of right for each calculation for each building. But those again are very nominal spaces compared with the tremendous recapture of space from the previous pervious surface area.
So what, so what's the impervious number now?
The impervious number is now 49.03. Previously, we were requesting a variance of.
59.26.
Was that?
Previous, the impervious you were requesting was 59.26.
So we have reduced the requested appeal by, by over 50%. So what we were here last time asking for, we have pulled that back by more than 50%. One of the ways with that, reasons that we're able to do that also was, there were some other housekeeping issues that were completed by the town in the, one of the recent code revisions. That was, Anne Marie, the revision where there are revisions as a result of the.
Industrial code.
Yeah, so there was a whole bunch of them. One of them was to also clarify the definition of what the wholesale business non-nuance was that is permitted here. Basically, what that said was that they redefined it, so the new code, okay, this was adopted on November 7th of '24. So the new code basically says that any industry which is not determined to be detrimental to the environment and which is located by reason of the emission of smoke, noise, odor, dust, dirt, gas, glare, et cetera, and which, and traffic which will, which does not include any open storage yard or outdoor processing of materials, any business general, and I'll emphasize this here, generally consisting of storage of large quantities of goods. So it clarified that that, the, the building number two is not an industrial building, where people have, and they're in there processing. You know, that was, I think, something, Anne Marie, that they wanted to clarify in the code.
Right.
So that changed the parking. We were using the 1 to 300, undesignedated, because there was nothing in the parking schedule to use for that. So we used the 1 to 300. It says in the code, if it's not defined in the parking schedule, use. It says in the code, if it's not defined in the parking schedule, use 1 to 300. So we had that, which pushed up our parking load. Now, with it being a building, that's exactly what the town wants, with, you know, the front area being display and office and the back being storage, it now uses the storage parking.
Which is?
Which is 1 per 1,000 for the first 5,000, and then it goes higher than that afterwards. So that allowed some of the parking areas that were on the plan to also reduce in addition to moving the driveways around. So it was a pretty hard lift. It was a lot of work, and it was really directly a result of the interaction we had with the Board at the last meeting. Now, in terms of the impervious surface requirement, going back again, I just want to bring up the point that at the March 21st of '24 Planning Board meeting, which was a work session meeting, that is the meeting that previously we had the application, we had pervious pavers as part of the parking area. At the meeting of 21, 24, in order for that to be incorporated into a site plan, the Planning Board has to authorize it. They have to look at it and say, yes, we agree. They agreed to it at that meeting. They said, yes, we looked at this parcel, we agree you can do that. So after that was agreed to by the Planning Board at that meeting, subsequent to that, on Local Law 15204, was adopted August 26, 2024, to revise that plan. We then received on 9/4/24, an email from Greg Bergman that states, please also be advised that your site plan must be amended to reflect the newly adopted code change regarding pervious pavement. For the purposes of zoning compliance, pervious pavers are now considered impervious. That code change with regard to the current plan we're showing you is the reason that we would need a variance. If that code change hadn't happened with the ruling we had previously gotten from the Planning Board, we would not be exceeding the pervious surface right now. So that was strictly caused from when we started the application, it was accepted to do it one way, the code changed during the review, and we now are subject to a much stricter requirement with regard to the impervious surface.
So technically, you know, I know that you were before the Planning Board, I watch a lot of their meetings. Straw poles are not approvals. You know, it's just, that wasn't an approval. And quite honestly, the impervious surface provisions even prior to the amendment weren't designed for large-scale wholesale, Costco's, the things like that. I mean, you know, I'm sure you're aware, there was a large-scale medical office in Aquaback that was proposing to increase the FAR because they would be able to, quote, create impervious parking. And the code was never designed for that. Otherwise, we'd have our shopping centers, all large gravel lots. But anyway, just a clarification, when you say they approved, it wasn't a vote to approve?
There was a poll, you're correct.
A straw poll.
However, that poll was required by planning to move forward with the application. That's part of the requirements in the code also, that the approving board would have to say, okay, we can keep going, they can do this. So, and that's what happened that night. I did leave one thing up here, just-
We are simply saying that for purposes of determining whether or not this board would exercise its discretion, that we went through that process and there was a code change in the midst of the process. We're not trying to suggest that a straw poll becomes a formal completed vote, but we are suggesting that we have been going through the process, trying to respond. Marty will show us in just a moment, I think, material reduction-
Thank you.
In our request on this item, and we did that to respond to the code clarification or code change. That's all we're saying, but we are saying that that's a valid reason for the board to exercise its discretion in our favor if it means that it deserves approval.
And also, I agree exactly with what you're saying, and on the other side of the coin, it didn't prohibit it. That's why the code was amended to clarify it. What we just gave you is also, the night we were here on December, there were two other appeals that included impervious surface. What we did is we went back in 2024, and it turns out that there were 11 appeals for additional impervious surface. The average additional impervious surface appeals averaged 94.81% of additional impervious surface. Our appeal, which has been reduced in half, is now an appeal for an additional 22.57% of impervious surface. So, you know, originally, we were up to almost 50% of additional, now we're down to 22.57. We've reduced it, and during the year of 2020, there were 11 appeals for additional impervious surface with an average request of 94.81%.
Just a question, of those, were those commercial, residential, and did they involve pre-existing non-conforming lots that didn't meet the zoning code?
Just a percentage.
Okay, so-
Just a percentage. They were allowed this as of right?
No, but I'm asking you, what type of applications were they?
I didn't review that. So for me, it's immaterial. They request, there was a percentage there, and they requested additional percentages for whatever the reason may be, but it was requested. It's just a clarification, of 11-
Right.
Appeals during 2024, there were 11 that had an average of 90, or 21% requested issues.
No, I appreciate that you did the work, but it would have a much stronger impact, I'm sure Council would agree, if they were commercially zoned properties, if they didn't involve pre-existing non-conforming small lots.
One can always desire more definitive data on any question on any of these hearings, I don't disagree. The point we are making is that our now substantially reduced request is on the very modest side of these approvals, that they do include commercial as well as residential applications. And just to speak to the one important point you made, Council, this building is 100, proposed building is 150 by 140 feet. It's not a shopping center or a big box in any regard. So we believe that the change down to the 22% or thereabouts modification is well within the Board's discretion and does not negatively impact what it is charged with protecting.
As to the FAR appeal, I would like to just initially touch base on both buildings individually. Building one is the building, as Richard had said previously, we had presented information at the last appeal, that a need has been identified for vehicle storage. One of the important things to keep in mind here is for these types of facilities, they're now not the storage buildings where you just pull up and there's a garage door. You go into the buildings, there are elevators, there are hallways, all of these things that people that utilize the storage facility get a cart, they go in, they go up to their unit, wherever it is. So you couldn't utilize the first floor of the building for parking because it functionally kills the building. You've got to have people go into the first floor, circulate throughout the building for the storage use. The only place to put the automobiles is in a lower storage facility like, you know, on the basement floor. That doesn't affect the functionality of the storage building above. So that need has been established in terms of the market, and the way to achieve it is to do that basement area. Also, one thing that's very important with regard to building one is that the additional FAR request is totally below grade. So the additional FAR is underground and it is not visible at all. As to building two, only approximately 10,000 square feet of building two's basement is in excess of permitted FAR. We have our building, we have a total allowable FAR of 154, 920. Above grade, we have 144, 750, and the building footprints below grade are 54, 600. Of that area that's below grade, 10,000 of it is actually, would be allowable FAR if it was above grade. You know, it's as of right. So some of our as-of-right FAR is also in the basement of building two. So it's not only all additional area in basement two, it does include some of our permitted FAR in the basement of building two. Again, both buildings are completely below grade, and that's why we feel that the appeal for the additional FAR, since there is certainly a need for the space, is really in concert with the legislative intent for the visual impact in that corridor coming into Riverhead. That's what the whole landscaping 50% item is in the code. You know, they want it to be more landscaped and more open. Having the building, the additional FAR completely below grade has absolutely no adverse or additional impact on the property. If the basements weren't there, the FAR above grade is the same FAR above grade, and it doesn't change visually one bit. The planning report that we have dated March 6, '24 specifically states that these types of uses are very low impact. The storage-type uses are, quote, self-storage, is a low-intent to be used in terms of traffic generation and use. So it's a very low-impact use. That's from Mr. Bergman's planning memo on the review of the project. Also, in one of the previous appeals, that was before this board, and that was previously last, here, is 2023-009, that was for the storage location on the main road in Aquaback. That storage facility, the findings of this board were that the variance sought would not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, and that the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical environment, conditions of the neighborhood. Some of the testimony during that hearing referred to the fact that it's a very low-impact use, especially, you know, the traffic there going from the Merge 5825 to 105. That use was allowed here because it's such a low impact, and that's a very tough traffic area. Just for relativity, that appeal increased the FAR, and actually, this is storage building to storage building, increased the FAR by 149.3% over what is permitted, and we are requesting 28.66% over what is permitted. So there's certainly a precedent there. I'm sure that Mr. Eisenberg and myself would be happy to answer any questions right to the Board including.
Just clarification. The original request on the FAR was 77.5%. Maximum permitted is 60%.
Correct.
I listened to everything you said, but I didn't get the hard numbers. What's the relief regarding FAR now?
The FAR wasn't much at all. We only went down from 77.5 to 77.2. That hasn't changed much, but the change on that was actually, if you notice, the building is flipped now, and we had a different configuration pulling down into the basement. So on the lower level, there's a, like a recess that goes under the building where the overhead door is, so if somebody's going down with a vehicle to store, they can make a radius turn.
The ramp?
Correct.
Ramp to cellar floor plan?
Right, on building number two.
Correct.
How many parking spaces are there that you, I understand, in order to create the green area, which we like, you had to eliminate a lot of, it looks like you had to eliminate a lot of parking spaces.
I think in building two, you had 700 and somewhat parking spaces, didn't you? Storage? I don't know what building two was.
Building two?
That's not the surface.
Are you talking about the, you're talking about the surface parking, the parking required for the facility?
Yeah, the surface parking on building two. How many parking spaces do we have now with the new plan? How many did we lose?
The total required parking is 51 cars. That's how many we have. That's for both parcels. Parcel one, building one, requires a total of 18.52 cars. So we rounded that to 19 cars for building one. Building two includes the first floor office area toward the front of the building is 21 cars. The mezzanine office area at 150 is 26 cars, and the warehouse areas included an additional 8.5 cars, brought us to 50.3 cars required total. So with that, we have provided that amount of parking for both buildings.
How much was for the warehouse?
You mean, building one, storage, or the warehousing on building two?
Building two has two levels above ground and then one below ground?
No, but that's building one. That's the big storage building, the one on the right.
So buildings.
That requires 19 cars total, which is very consistent with a storage property because storage properties are, I mean, I've used them. You go there once every couple of weeks, maybe, you pull in, you go to your unit, you grab something, you leave. The other building would have a similar small amount of parking if it was strictly the storage, which has been defined now by that code revision that clarified that it was storage. The heavy parking for the building two is the front area, which is the office and the retail areas. So you have to calculate them separately.
What's the height of building one?
They're both at the permitted height, so both buildings are 34 feet.
The, I want to say the antique car storage, however you want to call it. Originally, we talked about antique cars.
Exactly.
Car storage in the basement. I don't remember. How many spaces are there for that?
Well, it depends on the, who's going to rent it, if they want to have, you know, an area for their own cars, because you really, you wouldn't lay it out like a parking lot because what happens there is people park all in tandem. So there may be like 12 cars parked where, you know, you'd have to move six of them to get the one out of the back, but that's, you know, they only get them on occasion the way that they, you know, some people have 12 cars that they keep that there, so.
I think that leads into another question. Is this more of like, is it operated like a parking garage?
No.
Like you drive down there and somebody goes and gets your car? Or is it like, I got a whatever, 57 Corvette, and I'm renting a spot and putting it in?
Correct. It's really, it's really more for the people that, you know, have a $500,000 landhold and they have a place out on Dune Road. They're not going to leave it, you know, under a beach house in Dune Road which has breakaway flood walls. They're going to, you know, when they're not here, they're going to want to have someplace to keep it. That's the type of storage you're looking at here. As Richard had said, if somebody does have a car and they find that they don't need it except for, you know, occasions, taking a trip or whatever, instead of having it in the driveway, they may-
So there's 80 somewhat individual spots that could potentially be rented?
Yes, correct. I don't know how exactly the business model would work out in terms of how they work it per, you know, per client or, you know, per se.
And if you come to get your car, you're going to, the car that you use to get there, you're going to put in the spot where you take your-
I wouldn't think so. I mean, you know, every time, I actually had one of my cars in storage up on Flinders Road, so when I went to get it, I had to have somebody drop me off, you know, and I took the car and left.
But we do want to emphasize, this is, vehicle storage is not intended to be any kind of public parking facility at all.
At all, right.
In other words, you can't go there with your car and just say, hey, listen, I'm going to take a walk to Kangaroo, it's going to leave my car here.
This is, this will be at a pricing scheme appropriate to the use, for the uses we described for vehicle storage. described for vehicle storage. It's not going to be for any kind of public parking.
So is that the my space? In essence, I say I want 5,000 square foot for whatever I've got. Is it being cordoned off? Is it, I'm just trying to understand, I don't know that really matters here at the end of the day, but is it one large paved area that's underneath the building? Or I come in and I say I've got a Lamborghini, or I've got something that's worth a million dollars. I want this amount of space where I can park it in. Is there a roll-up door inside there? So you have to do more construction inside of it based off of the lease?
These uses have some flexibility. It's possible that there would be collectors who might have multiple vehicles. They might want to see if they could get, if we could get, consistent with code, a kind of security fencing inside the area. There might be others who simply want the car parked and don't care whether it takes time to have it retrieved. We want to retain the flexibility, because until we start marketing this usage, we can't precisely be sure whether or not the typical customer wants to store one car or eight cars.
And this is not a situation where you're going to be stacking cars, like on lists and things like that?
No. The, I can't imagine that the heights or the structural would allow for anything like that.
Do we know how many parking spots we lost on around Building 2, roughly?
With the revised application, give us a minute.
Yeah, sure. The previous application, total parking provided was 104 cars. On the current application, the parking provided is 51. So it was reduced about half.
I do want to emphasize that we are trying to put up a building which will be marketed to primarily tradespeople. And with 140-foot depth, we're going to be a very suitable use for someone who wants to put a showroom in the first 40 or 50 feet, and then a storage area in the rear, whether it's tile, or carpet, or plumbing, or lighting. And for those tenants, effectively, the majority of the building, or a little bit more than half of the building, it's going to be warehousing. We believe the reduction in the surface parking does not pose any kind of issue. And once again, we believe that with the recaptizations, we have met that issue as an element.
And that is also very consistent, if you look at the plan, the revised plan.
So Marty, if I could interrupt you for one minute. Justin, can you make sure that Leroy is on?
He is. He's listening. He's just muted.
That's consistent with the double-loaded row of parking in the front, because that's where people are going to come in that, you know, they've got a prefab fireplace unit, and they have displays, and they, you know, want to place an order. So in the office upstairs, they place your order, and then they have these prefab units, you know, stored in the back, and I'll deliver it, you know, next Tuesday or whatever. So it's very consistent that that's really the, more of the public parking area. And then around the back for the storage, employees, et cetera, you would have the back parking area.
Are the footprints of each building, like the square footage, the footprints, have they been modified from Version 1 to Version 2 at all?
Only the storage building, the Building 1, very, very little, only because of the recon, I'm sorry, Building 2, very little because of the reconfiguration of the entrance to the lower level for the parking. I'm glad you mentioned that, though, because there is one other thing, and I think it's really important. The way that this has been reviewed by the building official, they agree with our square footages. The ramp area in Building 1 is not included as FAR footage, because it's a drive area. You know, it's basically just a driving ramp. We had shown it that way. We noted on the application that that's not considered FAR, because it's not, you know, it's sort of a strange area. And it was, when they looked at it, they, I, you know, concurred with that, because it was very clear the way it was on the application. Just as a footnote that...
So Andreas made that determination, Greg?
Yeah, I mean, it's 3,520 additional square feet. So if it was approved this way, and then all of a sudden, the official said, oh, we should have counted that as FAR, we would be, you know, we would actually have a 3,520 square foot shortage. I actually made a note of that to clarify tonight, so that the action by this board would take that into account.
That's our submission. If there are any other questions, we'd be happy to respond. And we do thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
And actually, thank you for the first meeting, the comments, because it really, when I went back and looked at it, it really is a legislative intent in the code that, how they want these properties developed. And in rereading it, I realized, said, you know what, I mean, frankly, if I told my client, I said, if I was on a zoning board, and that special provision was in there, that's legislative intent that goes beyond just dimension for the landscaping, I wouldn't authorize a variance. So I told him, I said, we're going to change it, because I'm not going to go in for it for you, because I wouldn't give it to you if I was on a board. So we did the hard work in order to, in response to the dialogue that we had at first meeting, and we do appreciate that.
So just a couple of comments and questions. Before the zoning board of appeals wrapped up in the prior meeting, I believe it was the chairman, and possibly one other member of the board, had asked you if you would consider, quote, "scaling down the building size." Comment, so question, you know, that doesn't really appear to have changed. Comment, obviously, you did an excellent job with the landscaping, and really, it's evident you took a hard look at the impervious surface. So I just leave that question lingering, because that was one of the final comments, words, or direction given from members.
I think when, in giving it the hard look, and we do this as long as we have as the developer ourselves as planners, I think we achieved what the board is looking for without having to reduce the FAR. We were really able to achieve that. The FAR, if it weren't there, it's so low-impact, it wouldn't change the building at all. Matter of fact, if there was one thing that would happen if the FAR wasn't permitted in the basement, you know, additional FAR, we have 10,000 feet of FAR in the basement. We'd probably take the ramp area and make it more building volume above grade, because we would have, you know, it would be as of right. So the same exact footprint, same exact floor plan, everything would be the same, except for the fact that there would actually be more building volume above grade, because we'd be entitled to it. So, you know, with that being the case, we were able to achieve, I think, what the board desired, and what my client desires through that heavy lift that we did. And I think it's mutually beneficial to both parties here.
So this building is still going to be a 200,000-square-foot building? Is that the way I understand this? Taking into account the seller's face?
Yes, correct. There is the total building area for both buildings is 199,350 square feet, 144,750 square feet of which is above grade, and 54,600, which is below grade. So we have 144,750 above grade. We're permitted above-grade FAR of 154,920 square feet. So we're 10,000 square feet less above grade than the permitted FAR. So we could actually add, you know, that additional footage above grade, but that's, you know, then it starts getting back to not being, not being in the spirit of that legislative intent of how this area presented, it's not going to enter into Riverhead. We really took that to heart based on the comments, and, you know, the expertise as far as looking at the code that Anne Marie had expressed to us about, you know, I realized it. I went back, I reread it. I said, well, this is not just, it was funny, in one of the early comments, she mentioned about dimensional things versus things that have more importance. And after the last meeting, when I reread the code a couple of times, I said, that 50% number, that's legislative intent. That's for the beautification of entering the town. And that was really what we did the heavy lift on. And we were able to achieve that and still maintain the footage that, you know, for the benefit of my client and development of the property.
So just give me the number again for the square footage above grade, 144?
144, 750. Assuming that does, assuming that does not have to include the 3,520 square feet, which is that ramp in Building 1, that's, I didn't have that as part of the FAR, just as an understanding.
But the above-ground still is available as of right, even if buildings requires us to include that 3,100 feet.
Correct.
Right, but it just bumps up the floor area.
Exactly, a little bit. It was that little housekeeping thing when I was looking at it, and I said, you know what, I better bring that up, because so far, when we reviewed it with staff, the planning staff, they looked at it, and they got, yeah, that's the ramp, you know. But then I thought about it, I'm like, well, but it's within the building, you know, envelope, so is it FAR? And I never asked the question of them. They never said it wasn't. But I, being very thorough with the application, I said, I better make sure we mention that, because I, right now, us and the planning department have assumed that that's not building footage. So maybe we can get a clarification on that, and if it is, we would keep the application. The way it was, as a matter of fact, I think the original application, because we went down slightly, I think what the original application was, it was a little bit more. But I did just want to have that in there as a point of reference for clarification.
Marty, one last question. Is the basement conditioned space for the car parking?
A conditioned space, that is correct.
Is it conditioned?
Yep. I mean, these are, Building 2 will have storage associated with the, you know, the businesses there. So they're going to, you know, want them to have conditioned space. It's very good, because it's not outdoor storage, you know, at this location. So that's a very good thing. And of course, for the automobile storage, especially the type of clientele that's expected there, they're fully conditioned space.
With the changes that meet the landscape requirements, there really is no physical space for any miscellaneous vehicle storage or parking. If someone needs to store a vehicle, they will pay the requirement to store a vehicle. Otherwise, these are intended, as Marty mentioned, to be, and I think everyone agrees, very low-impact uses all around.
Will there be repairing work done on these cars in these buildings?
No, no, this is for storage.
We're not requesting any kind of shop approval for that work, and we will have license agreements, which are properly and precisely drafted with our customers. I can say that, because I wind up doing that work. But we know that what we want to do is have license agreements precisely worked, so that people know they're storing operating vehicles, and that there are a number of activities which one might informally think one might be able to do, and which we are going to tell them, no thanks, you can't do that. This is for storage and only storage. It's not a public garage, and there aren't any repair or maintenance work going on in the, et cetera.
And that's also reflective in the, you know, big building code, because that's a different occupancy. You get into the repair, and that's a whole different ballgame. And that's not what is reflected here.
How many units are in the above-ground storage?
Roughly, roughly.
700.
700?
Sounds like a lot, but a lot of the people would rent like a 5x5 with a roll-up, you know, where they just have files and things that they want. It sounds like a lot, but it's about 700. Some are 10x10, 10x20, some are 8x5.
And how many units are rented out? I don't remember in Building 2.
Units in Building 2 is five. It's 150 feet, I'm sorry, six, six, 625-foot-wide units.
Just to be specific, that 5 is the concept plan. It's conceivable that when we are actively marketing, someone might need what we refer to as a double space for the purpose of having more storefront. I don't want to make it sound as if 5 is the precise set and stone number, but the concept plan provides for 5.
It was 6. Yeah, it's 6.
6 storefronts.
6 storefronts, 6 at 25 feet is the one figure.
Leroy, have you been getting a clear picture up there?
Does he have snow?
Everything but.
Conagora. No, I don't think so.
So I would just like a staff and updated staff report. So, because of the ones, and if it isn't, it'll be only so.
I understand.
Nice job.
Thank you, sir.
So I think the zoning board's recommendation is going to be to adjourn. I'm going to get it, I'm going to take these plans back. I want an updated staff report from planning. I want to make sure your numbers are good. I'm really not focusing on that 3,520. What I'm focusing on is the parking and the other dimensions, because I don't want you to keep coming back and going in circles and circles if...
And I can actually, I'll give you, this is actually a current copy. I can deliver additional copies to the planning office. I can make additional copies in response to this meeting, so I can hear you.
So, I mean, I know you've been waiting, but, you know, with this application, so we're going to want an updated staff report from Greg, just to kind of confirm everything you presented, the parking calculations are correct. So what do you think, we could have a staff report back?
I'd have to speak to Greg about it tomorrow. I mean, we have a meeting on the 13th, and then the following meeting is on the 27th of February.
So we're going to recommend 2/27, because they won't have any issues. The staff report will be circulated to the zoning board members. They'll get to review it, coincide it with the plan.
One quick question. If in the unlikely event that the staff report requires or asks for any additional information from us, will we have an opportunity to submit that in writing?
Oh, absolutely.
Very good.
Yeah, the goal is, you know, I'd like the staff report in a week to 10 days, if I could. So if anything is not matching the plan, it could be addressed.
Before we adjourn, is there, I don't know if anyone from the audience, members of the public, wanted to speak. I don't have anyone on Zoom, but...
I think they were all with the same team, right?
Just wanted to make sure. Okay.
All right.
So 2/27.
You got anything else? Let's get...
I'll make a motion, we adjourn until 27th of February?
Yep.
All right. Move the second, and Mr. Portia?
Aye.
Mrs. Weskey?
Aye.
Mr. Zilla?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
And I vote aye. You all have a good evening?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have minutes.
We have minutes for?
It should be, let me just see, January 9th. We have minutes.
Somebody move it?
So move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion, we adjourn until February 13th?
That's a great motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Have a good...